So we are recording the meeting now.
Okay.
For those just joining at home, you've missed approval of the minutes, which was very exciting. And an update on how well the roads are being plowed. That's it. Thanks for joining us.
Great. I'll take care of that. I'll take care of the flag.
Next.
Yeah. Well, if that's it for building or for buildings and grounds, we can move on to water commission. Any updates on any water issues, Mark, other than the pipes in the library being slow?
No, Donnie Ellis called me today. He had a, the meter plate broke on this water in the basement of the coach house. So I gave him a new plate to put on. So he should be able to. And then we had, we had some water leaking somewheres and I traced it down to the Minaj House on 58. Ross shut the curb stop, but he didn't shut it all the way. So it was still leaking in the house. So I got that shut all, all the way off. So that took care of that problem.
Okay.
Yeah. And then the Route 58 tank, we're pretty much running it manually right now because this time of year, the batteries don't stay charged. So hopefully by next year, we'll have power up there and we won't have to, we won't have to do that anymore.
Yeah. Yeah. So on that note, I've been in touch with Jim and Ann Lackner Grabiel about the easement.
Okay.
I need to send them a couple more pieces of paperwork tomorrow, but we spoke over the weekend about it. They just wanted to know the locations of the poles where they're going to be, just so they had a visual of what was going on. So I'm going to send them that with the easement paperwork tomorrow. So I'm hoping that, you know, by end of this week, next week, we've got things lined up for that.
So you, do you understand where I, the pole is going to be? You go up Reagan Road, right where that telephone box is on the left is where one pole is going to be. And then the other pole will be across the road from the bottom of Reagan Road to, to anchor the other pole. So that'll be just on across the road. That's where the other pole will be. So yeah, I don't think they can see any of that from their house.
No, I don't think they can either.
Yeah.
They're pretty well screened back there anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cool. And were you going to try to see about another estimate on the electrical work? Just so we.
Yeah, I called a couple of people. I'm trying to nail down another estimate. So.
Okay. If you can't get one, that's fine. Just document who you reached out to and when, and that way you can just have it for the folder that, you know, we did reach out to. Yeah.
Okay, I will.
Great.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I almost thought of something else too. We didn't, I didn't put in the excavating for the conduit. Probably be like a thousand dollars probably. Add that in, but that'll be like a miscellaneous, yeah.
Very great. We did get an email last Friday from VLCT that said they've, basically the feds have finally finished their rulemaking process for the ARPA funds. And there's been some things that have shifted and changed a little bit. And basically VLCT's guidance to the town, towns was take a beat and pause on the expenditure of anything regarding ARPA funds until they can do kind of a more detailed dive into this new guidance. Just so that we don't get screwed up on anything. So it doesn't, shouldn't affect us because we're still trying to get our ducks in a row. So we haven't spent anything yet. So when we finally go back and we can kind of ratify that decision of expenditure, we can add that excavation cost in there anyway. So.
Okay.
Not a big deal for now, but Aaron did reach out and just said, probably want to pause on doing formal ARPA stuff until we get word back from them. Just so we don't do anything funky with the guidelines.
I guess I'll get, I'll just get a written estimate for putting that conduit in just to, so we have it. Yeah.
Awesome. Anything else under water commission updates?
No, the water test has been brought in and came back good. And we have a bunch of testing you need to do for this first quarter, but I've got all the bottles and stuffs ordered. So we'll get that done. We'll pick, I'll pick that up when I go to Heinsberg this week. And so that should be all set. Yeah.
Cool. Right on. Well, if that's it for water commission, we can move on to the Longley Bridge Tap project. So I think everything's cool with our state permits with DEC. That's all in. I've got one last form from Army Corps to sign and send it back, which basically was us acknowledging that we screwed up and didn't get their permission for something earlier, but now we're seeking it after the fact and they need forms and triplicate and everything. So anyway, so that'll go back in and we'll finally be good to go there. The one other piece of kind of things moving along with the project is, so I did reach out to Abe and Jade about the easement of right of way for the work. And they did sign it and send it back. And then after I got that back from them, I was talking with Linda Regional Planning. And we were going over some of the federal requirements for things. And one of the things that we neglected to do, I didn't realize we needed to do this was when we gave them the easement paperwork, we needed to make it clear that they could have an appraisal of value done for the easement. Basically like, what is the easement worth? And I hadn't basically asked them if they wanted that done. And so I circled back and gave them some additional paperwork about the processes that we need to go through. They did ask for, sorry, my chair is sinking for some reason. I did ask them if they wanted one and they said, yeah, they'd be curious to get one. And so the way that works is that step one for appraisal is the town listers come up with a establishment of value based on the land schedule. And if that establishment of value is greater than $10,000, then we would need to go to an actual licensed appraiser to get an appraisal of value done. The listers came up with a value somewhere around a thousand bucks, I think. So we don't need to get a formal appraisal done. We can just use that value. I've given that material to Linda. She's going to double check some stuff on her end and then we'll go back to Abe and Jade. So I think that if we do come back with the appraisal of value at whatever amount, they can ask to be compensated for the easement. And so I'll make sure I understand that process. So that at our next meeting, we can vote on a decision about, you know, the purchase of the easement of right of way. But we want to make sure we do all our, all our things as we should with state and federal processes. So we don't get jammed up down the line again.
Hopefully it's going to be going out to bed pretty soon too, I would hope.
I hope so.
Yeah. Yeah. Guess we can ask Linda that question next time we talk to her. Yeah.
Yeah, I'll make a note right now. Cause I'm talking, I have a call with her tomorrow.
Okay.
So I'll ask her what the status is for that.
Yeah.
But yeah, if we're going to be doing it spring, summer, we got to get that lined up now so that we're not scrambling.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yep. Cool. So yeah, so that's it for the Longley Bridge Tap project. Like I said, we'll, we'll get all that other stuff buttoned up. So we're squared away on the easements and all the processes there. We'll go back with Linda on. So with that, we're a little bit early for visitors, but if there's no objection, we can, we can turn to visitors and do that now. Welcome, Marika. So we usually go in the order folks arrived. So Larry and/or Anita, if you've got anything for visitors, the floor is all yours.
We're good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good, good. Tell them.
Good. All right. Sue, I think you were the next one on my call. Yeah. Great. Marika, welcome. And the floor is yours for visitors. If you've got something for the board.
Okay. I was just interested in B2, the town office renovation, because I missed the meeting and I was wondering if there was any update.
Yeah. So we, we don't have any update at this time. I don't think the committee has actually met formally since our last meeting as a board. And so our understanding is that the committee is still working on kind of fleshing out, you know, where things would go based on the to scale drawings the architect provided. So they're going to work that up with the architect next time to kind of start, you know, putting pen to paper on what we'd actually do. And the architect was also going to be looking at reaching out to Department of Fire Safety. So we can start to get them looped in so that they don't jam us up down the line with any other renovation questions. The only other thing was that I did have a discussion with Liz the other day, just about, and she's already on top of this, but just making sure that whatever we do, we're also meeting the, all the ADA requirements. Cause right now that building is like grossly not ADA compliant. We're going to want to make sure that whatever we do, we've got all the right stuff there so that we're, we're all in top shape.
Okay. And then I was just, I'm sure it will be discussed town meeting day.
Yep. Yep. That's coming up.
That's it.
Okay. Great. Thanks, Marika. Um, so yeah, go ahead, Sue.
What in the building is not ADA compliant?
So right now that front door, I don't think is ADA compliant because it's too heavy. Like I think, I think that door would need to be a push button one.
I got you. I got you. Okay. Cause the bathroom is all fine and.
Yeah, the bathrooms are big enough. Yep. It's more, it's more of the front door and the main access.
Gotcha.
And then, and this isn't part of the building itself, but we also need to at some point, and Mark, if you want to make a note about getting these ordered, we do need to get up handicap parking signs out in the lot. When we repave it this coming summer or whenever, we'll actually repaint the spots, but we do need to have signs up just for the first two spots to be handicapped. But yeah, other than that, Sue, the buildings, I think there might be a few names, but yeah.
Right. The library, library is definitely not ADA compliant. This is all too narrow.
Yep. Yep. So we'll add that to the mix for those discussions. So we can move on at this point. If there's nothing else for visitors, I do want to flag that McKenna Young is going to be joining us right around seven, maybe. McKenna's interested in the dog officer position. So when McKenna joins us, we'll pivot to that conversation and talk about dog officer stuff. So the next up under old business is the wastewater and streetscape projects. So the news here is that we've been going back and forth with the state and the feds for months now on how to make this project financially viable. We've got their congressionally, congressionally designated spending requests still out, which has moved out of committee, but the legislature has not acted on. I did hear back from Sanders staff Friday, Saturday. And essentially Congress is working under a continuing resolution until sometime in February or March at this point. At that point, when that runs out, they might actually pass a budget. Who the hell knows what they're going to do. But for now, until they actually pass the spending bills and not a continuing resolution, that stuff doesn't move. So that CDS request is basically stuck until they do something. So in the conversations with the state, we've gone around and around and I don't have anything like physically that I can show you tonight or numbers that I can give you. Primarily because the right people in the governor's office haven't signed off on it yet. And so I can't like, I can't say too much publicly, I guess, which is weird because it's a select board meeting and I need to be able to talk to the board, even though it's being recorded. So we're, we're going to get a couple of ARPA grants from the state. According to the current plan, the first one would cover the amount of the Northern Borders Regional Commission amount of money. That was $500,000 from NBRC. We had some pretty big problems with that because there was an 80% cap on the federal funds that could be used for a project. And our project is pushing at that point was pushing like 94, 95% federal funding. Which basically meant that we'd have to totally rework the entire project financing framework in order to actually use those funds. The state stepped in and said that they would essentially cover that amount of money with an ARPA grant. Meaning that we could walk away from the NBRC money and not have a hole in the budget. And it's never like something you look to do, walking away from half a million bucks, but in walking away from that money and going with the ARPA money from the state, we basically lose all of those conditions of funding. So the current offer, as I see it on the table, is the state is looking to give us an ARPA grant of about $510,000. That would cover the NBRC kind of hole, removing those funds from the picture. And then the state is poised to give us an additional $1.5 million in a second ARPA grant, which would fill the remainder of the donut hole left by the failure to pass the tax rate question last year. So with those two pieces of funding, we now have a fully baked capital stack where we can make the project work with no impact on municipal tax rate. And the user fees being under 1% of mean household income, which was our target. So I can't give you solid numbers tonight. I'm hoping that by the end of the month, I can, I can, I can, we can put out numbers publicly to everybody. Again, this is a weird spot because like, we don't have the signature of the right people that we needed from yet, but we've been assured that these things are in the works. And we also can't go public with certain things because politically, we can't get out in front of the governor's office. But I don't care. We need to talk about this as a board and it's a warranted meeting. So as soon as I have the green light to get those numbers out to everybody, I will. But basically what this looks like is that we, we have it. It's, it's there. The, the funding is in place. We can make the project work. We can, we can go ahead and do it and not have it impact the tax rate. The local option tax would more than cover the annual debt service on the note. The framework we'd be using, and again, I'll, I'll get this out in writing with numbers attached to it. So folks can digest it more. But basically what we're going to be doing is we burn through the first ARPA grant from the state, which supplants the NBRC money. We would then burn through the USDA rural development funds. Once those are done, we would then close on the USDA rural development loan. At that point, that second grant from the state would come in, we would use that to make a essentially like a massive balloon payment right off the bat, which would then re-amateurize our loan with the state out to a 30-year period where the debt service can be covered by the income from the local option tax. So again, there's no, no impact on municipal tax rate for the annual debt service. And the system is supported by the, by the user fees, which again, we're looking at less than 1% of mean household income, which was our target there. So something like $467 as being the, the monthly cost for this, or the annual cost, annual cost for the system. If you're on it. So I'm kind of exciting news. I don't, again, like without having the formal stuff back from DEC and the high sign from the governor's office, there's only so much that we can put out there publicly, but um, that's where we're at. Yeah. Sue, did you have a question?
Yeah, I typed in, in chat, the local option tax, and then you started talking about it.
Yeah.
When can we implement that?
The local option tax. So this will be something we'll talk about under the town meeting.
Cause we passed it last year at town meeting.
Yeah. So we need to pass a charter in order to make that happen. So if you want, we can put a pin in that for the time being and we'll, we'll circle back to that when we talk about town meeting.
Okay.
But what I told, basically what I told the folks at the state that we're working with is that by the end of the month, they need to give us formal word and permission to like share stuff with people. Because we want to make sure all of this ends up in the town report. And so my plan is to put together in the letter to the town, like we do every year, the explanation of what this looks like, and then have an actual spreadsheet in there that shows the different funding sources, how they're being used, what's coming from what funding source, so that people understand it better. But again, it looks like we're, we're there basically. The only tricks here, two things to keep in mind. We have to use all of this money, spend all of the money by December 31st, 2026. Seems like kind of a far, far away time, but it's really not when you think about actual executing a 12.1 million dollar or 12.11, 11.9 million dollar project like this. So we're going to have to really kind of put the hammer down on this, starting in the spring to get the engineering work and things going. If we're going to actually have the system built and installed by the end of 2026. So that is, that's not problematic, but it doesn't mean we can molly egg much. Yeah, Larry.
Would you just repeat the probable user fee number, please, again?
Yeah. So again, this isn't completely 100% locked in. But I think that if we, I'm just pulling up a couple of notes here. The user fee right now that we're looking at would be about a 375 bucks annually.
Thank you.
Is what we're looking at for a user fee right now, under this, under this framework.
Thanks. Thank you, Charlie.
Yeah. The other thing that's kind of a little bit touchy is not touchy, a little bit kind of up in the air is the streetscape part of this project. Because we've got the wastewater part that we need to execute on. Now the funding is finally kind of baked for that. The streetscape part, we've got that loan agreement from USDARD. But that same loan agreement would also have to be executed by the end of 12th, of the end of December 2026. And so I've got a call tomorrow with Linda Blash and Regional Planning and some folks from Royal Tanner to figure out how, how this actually stacks up together and we make it work timing wise to be able to kind of utilize the funds that we've got. And then we have to go after more funds to the streetscape work, depending on what it is we want to do. So at some point in the next six to 12 months, we might have to have a, you know, a real, you know, frank conversation about what it is we're going to try to do on the surface layer of Main Street. Given kind of what we're looking at with money and time. You know, we had kind of three scenarios, the, the far end of which was kind of like totally redo everything. Frankly, I don't know if we'll have the time and the money to do all that. So we might be looking at scaling some stuff on that end back in terms of just doing sidewalks and lighting and things like that. That's all up in the air right now, but we'll probably try to get some more clarity on that in the next, you know, six months or so. So we know what we're jumping into there. So that's the update on the wastewater project. I mean, it's really, I think it's really exciting news. I wish I could actually like put up some spreadsheets and numbers in front of you today and like walk through it. I'm hoping that we can do that at our next meeting. And then we can get it out to everybody in town so that they can look at the numbers and kick the tires and see what we're looking at, but it's, it's pretty promising. So I think when, when Phil Scott said in his, his address the other day, that they're going to be looking to help out communities like Montgomery with projects like this, he, he wasn't just blowing smoke. So any questions on there? All right. Well, keep an eye out for more information there. As soon as I get the information and I have, you know, the green light to, to, to put it out there, I'll email everybody that. And then like I said, we can talk about it in detail and go over the numbers at our next meeting. So that is the update on that front. And what I'd like to do is I want to invite or say hi to McKenna. Hi McKenna, thanks for joining us tonight.
I thank you.
Yeah. So, so if there's no objection, I want to pivot to the animal control officer, the dog officer appointment, which is item A under new business. Hearing no objection, we'll, we'll move to that. So McKenna has reached out, reached out to Liz to express interest in the dog officer position. And so McKenna is here tonight to chat with us about the position and hopefully go over any questions she's got. So McKenna, I guess, just to start off, do you want to just tell us a little bit about, about yourself, where, where you live in town or if you do live in town and yeah.
Sure. So hi, everybody. I'm McKenna Young. I'm 28 years old and I live right here in Montgomery. I'm right next to Fuller Bridge Road. I own this house. So right in town, I am a professional dog trainer. So I am certified in, you know, dog, dog behavior. And I've been working with animals since 2012 or 2011 at this point now. So I have a lot of experience with handling dogs. And as of right now, I went full time with running my own business here in town, which is super exciting. So I've done that for the last year. Done walking and hiking. So I take, you know, pack of dogs out for adventures. Either up GP in the summertime or just through the woods in the winter now. And then I do training as well. So yeah, I just, I was connected and heard that this position was available and it just seems like it would be very suiting to my schedule. Because right now I basically go out and do adventures in the morning. And then I have like, I, I have a good free afternoon. So my plan, if you know, I were to be doing this position is I could do my business, you know, still operate the way I am doing it. And then have time in the afternoons to, for, for the dog officer position and get all the licenses acquired for April.
Do you have any questions for the board on the position or anything around what goes into it or?
Yeah. So, um, well Liz gave me all of this information here. I, I have obviously a lot of information in front of me. I, I'm sure I'll have questions like down the line of, you know, once I get into it, in certain situations. I did talk to Liz a little bit about just the logistics of how I would do this, but I, full disclosure, my boyfriend lives in South Hero. So I am over on that side of the state sometimes. I, I live here full time, but there are occasions when I'm there for a weekend or really just a night. So I just wanted, I talked to Liz about that. She said that wouldn't necessarily be a huge issue if I were to just be there. I have like 24 hours to respond to a call. If something was going on, I mean, it's only an hour away. So I can just like hop in my car and come to town if there was something going on. Just full disclosure that I am over there at times. So. But I did, I did run through a lot of the basics with Liz. So at the moment I seem, I don't have like any questions off the top of my head besides. I was kind of curious just with this position and working for the town. When it comes to social media and, you know, people posting, because people will post photos of dogs all the time of, you know, does anyone know who this dog is? If I come across that, like as the dog officer, do I respond to that? You know, via Facebook, like I just want to know how that works because I see a lot of that and I try to help. But going into that position, I don't know if it has to like be a call to the office first before dealing with the, with the case.
Yeah. That's a great question. You know, formerly the dog officer only gets involved when there's a, you know, a formal notification to the office or something, or somebody calls you. That being said, if, if there was something that you saw through social media or wherever that you wanted to assist with, I don't think there's any issue with that.
Okay.
I'd also say, don't feel obligated. Like if you see something on Facebook, like, hey, there's this dog.
Jump in my car right away and go to.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Cause the dog officer position, I mean, it can go from times of like a fair amount of stuff happening, especially during licenser season of getting folks licensed and art and stuff. To then like six to eight months of crickets of like, nothing really happening, right?
That's kind of what Liz was saying.
Yeah. So it's really kind of like, you know, it comes and goes in terms of kind of what's happening and what, what needs to be taken care of. I guess one question I'd have for you is if, if a dog needs to be removed from a house for whatever reason, do you have the ability to house a dog? Do you have, uh, the ability to house a dog at at your house? Or do you have a place you'd be able to house the dog?
Yeah, um, so I own this house, as I said, and I do have a detached garage. So I could have either the dog in the garage or in a room in my house. I do have an, a dog here in my house who's not always the best with other dogs. So I would have to keep them separated, which I've done before with, you know, just friends' dogs and stuff in in this house. If they're, you know, kennel trained, it's obviously a lot easier. But I am able to, if I did have to impound a dog, either have them in a room here in my house or have them in the garage. But the garage isn't heated, so that would probably be more of like a summer thing. But most likely, I would probably have them in the house in a, just in a separate room. And I do have, sorry, um, and I do have a vehicle with, so I have a Toyota Tacoma that has a cap on the back. That's how I transport the dogs anyways for my dog business, because I do pick up and drop off. So I do have that, um, to be able to transport the dog safely as well.
Awesome. I swear to God, once this conversation started, like both of my dogs just showed up another. It was weird, like.
Yeah, now. I speak their language.
And usually I'm like, get out of here.
Mine is snoring behind me.
Any questions from board members? From McKenna. Oops, Suzanne, you might still be muted.
Yeah, I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, there you go. Hi, Suzanne.
No, I was just gonna ask the same question Charlie did, but. That's it, really?
Great. Uh, Mark or Emily, any questions from McKenna?
Just one question and McKenna, I assume with your experience, you do have the capacity to deal with aggressive dogs. And I know you're saying like, bring them into your house. I mean, if you are dealing with an aggressive animal, is that something that you're comfortable with?
Yeah, I mean, going into this position, if I did have to impound a dog in here, I assume that that might be, you know, the case. I don't, I don't know, but most of the time that could be the case. I've definitely dealt with aggressive dogs in the past. Again, as I said, my dog can be aggressive with other animals. But I am equipped to deal with that and I have been men, you know, mentally prepared to if I do have to respond to that. The only fear or question I should say. Going into this is that if I do have a situation where it's a dog that physically I literally can't. Handle by myself, just due to if it was, you know, a hypothetical, like a wolf hybrid or something, just me or due to their size. Do I have other people on the board that I could, you know, call to and ask for help in those situations? Like, I know what to do, but I'm just thinking, you know. I'm not, I'm only a, of the a hundred, you know, forty pounds if I do have a dog, but I can't physically handle by myself. If I can call someone in the town to help me, either get a dog into a vehicle or just get them situated in my house.
Yeah, I'm, I'm Mark. I'm the Public Works Director. So I'm at the garage all day long, so.
Okay.
Anything, you can just come over the garage or call the garage and if you need help with a dog or something. Or if you're going to a case where, you know, you need somebody else there because sometimes people aren't too nice. And so just let me know.
Okay.
And that's where the constable comes in.
Okay.
That's the constable's job.
Yeah, so Brent, Brent would be available to assist you, um, if there was any situations where either you needed to deal with a dog that was. Being unruly, or if you had a a human that was.
Yeah, I was gonna ask about that, too.
Yeah, Brent, so for those kinds of situations, Brent, we we would always carry you up with Brent.
Okay. Good to know.
You would never, yeah, you you would never have to go into a situation by yourself.
Right.
If it involves taking, taking a dog or doing something like that.
Yeah, that, that's great. I mean, I know that that might never be the case or, you know, one in ten. But just to know that that I have the backup and other people to lean on if I need, if I need support in those, in those times, so that would, that's great.
Awesome. Yeah, Marika, did you have a question?
No, it's not a question. That's a suggestion is maybe put out on Facebook that you meet some dog crates.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, I was thinking of doing the same because sometimes you can find them for free.
Oh, yes, there, I'm sure there are plenty of them in town here.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, put it on that Montgomery community page.
Yeah, I can do that. I have, I have one here at the house and I have another, you know, my parents, but more dog crates, the better. Just in case. Okay, perfect.
Awesome. Uh, any other questions from McKenna? All right, now hearing any questions, um, we've had a vacancy to fill for quite some time now, so. I'm gonna go ahead and, uh, and I will move, um, that the board appoint McKenna Young, uh, to the Animal Control Officer Position. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Great, thanks, Emily. Um, any further discussion? Hearing no further discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor of appointing McKenna Young as Animal Control Officer, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, McKenna, congratulations.
Thank you.
Swing by the, uh, swing by the clerk's office, um, whenever it's convenient and Liz and Genevieve can get you set up with all the stuff that you need there.
Okay, great.
And, and then at some point, um, they can probably give you the lowdown. We, we have one, it's not an open case going on, but there's one dog in town, just to bring you up to speed on.
Okay.
Nothing, nothing critical, more just a pain in the ass kind of situation than anything else.
Okay, and just. And while it's on my mind, uh, while we're talking, I, you know, I I did talk to Liz, as I mentioned a few weeks back. And I also did have a, an idea to, if I do have office hours there and I can sit down and basically make. One-hand flyers on certain, you know, certain topics. So if you do have either myself or any officer in the future, you basically can have like a handbook to respond to calls. Whether it's, you know, providing your dog more exercise or keeping them, you know, si- safe, you know, from children or other dogs, whichever the case be. I can basically create these like one-handed, just handouts for owners. And hopefully that would, you know, help so you could just literally have them on file and give, give to, you know, owners for support. And or tips and tricks with training or whichever the case is. So I just have that fun idea to do different topics like that.
That'd be awesome, yeah.
Great.
Great. Awesome. Well, thanks so much for, uh, for your interest in this and for stepping up.
Thank you so much. So I'll stop, I'll stop in to see Liz sometime this week, you said?
Yeah, I think she'll be there tomorrow through Friday, so.
Okay. Perfect. Saw a dog.
One of that one.
You're so cute.
You gotta get down, bud. So McKenna, you're welcome to hang out for the rest of the meeting, but don't feel obligated to if you don't want to.
Okay. McKenna, you can go catch that dog, you know.
Which, which one?
The one behind Charlie.
The one that's behind Charlie. He's very cute. I'm sure I'd love him.
Awesome. All right, thanks.
Thank you so much, guys. Nice to meet everyone.
Nice to meet you, too.
Thanks. Bye bye.
Um, so with that, we'll jump back to the municipal, uh, old business. Item B here is the municipal website discussion. I don't believe that, um, anything's happened since our last meeting on this. Emily, have you had any further discussions with, um, Erin or Liz or Zach?
I have not. I'm gonna jump back, I'm gonna jump back into that, but we've just, we've had a lot going on here that has not allowed me to jump back into that full force. But I will be hopefully this week. Um, so I'll get some updates.
Okay, great. We'll carry that one over. So old business, item C is town meeting. So, uh, the first kind of decision point here for the board is whether we're gonna do an in-person meeting. Or we're gonna go to Australian ballot, um, system again this year. The legislature, as folks know, have, uh, have permissively allowed towns to go to Australian ballot if they're a floor town, same as last year. We can also delay a town meeting until a time and date in the future if we wanted to do a spring outdoor meeting. I think all the years can do that again. Um, or we can move forward and and do it by Australian ballot, or we can have a floor meeting in March. So, uh, those are our options. We have been operating under the assumption that we're gonna go by Australian ballot. So information has gone out to the town, to all the elected officers who are up for reelection. With the procedures for the petition requirements. And Liz is, uh, getting all of our ducks in a row as far as balloting and and that kind of stuff. So we are moving in the position to go Australian ballot if we want to. But we as a board need to formally make that decision tonight. So, um, I'll open the floor up to anybody with with thoughts on which direction I think we should go. I'll jump in at once.
I think with everything that's going on, I think it's probably the best idea just to go back to Australian ballot again. And do it that way and then we know now, you know, to do it and. I mean, I seemed to work fairly well last year, have the informational meetings and, and, uh, go that route again. Because I think delaying it till like May or something, I don't think things are gonna be too much, hopefully they will be, but. Too much different. I mean, we actually could do that now because our budget doesn't really start till July now, so.
Yeah. Budget, our budget wouldn't be too bad. There's a few other things that we ideally would want to have passed in March as opposed to May.
Yeah.
Any other thoughts? Yeah, Emily, go ahead. Sorry, I come off mute.
I think, I think Mark's right. I know that it's a lot more work on. The part of Liz and Genevieve and. I appreciate all of that, but I, I think that. At this point, just not knowing what's going to be happening in the next six to eight weeks. I. I, I, I don't know. I, I have, I think there's so much value in having a floor meeting. But I think that Mark is right, and I think that at this point. People are probably expecting that we're going in that direction. And so I don't think that it's gonna catch people off guard. Um, and I think for this year, that might be the best solution.
Suzanne, any, any thoughts?
Can you hear me?
Yep, you're a little faint, but I can hear you, yeah.
Okay. I have my daughter's microphone headphones. Um, no, I just sort of agree. I'd love to do a floor town meeting. There's definitely a lot of value in, you know, community. Collection in that, but it, given the circumstances, I would say that Australian ballot is probably the more responsible choice.
Yeah. Great, thanks. Um, yeah, I mean, I agree with everybody. I'd much rather do a floor meeting, but at this point, it just seems like there's so much up in the air that, um, it's a smart decision just to make the call now and and we'll go Australian. So, um, would someone like to offer a motion to that and?
Make a motion to do Australian ballot for the twenty twenty two town meeting day.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Awesome. Um, any further discussion? All right, hearing no further discussion, we'll vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Great, motion carries. So, um, like I said, we've, we're kind of operating under that way now, so no big shifts or changes to be made tonight or anything like that. We'll just keep operating under this procedure. The one thing I will add is I haven't had time to go back and read through the exact legislation that the governor signed on Saturday. But one of the things I think was actually waiving the petition requirement. So, um, as soon as we have that nailed down, we'll try to get the word out on that. But right now, uh, folks running, uh, need to get a petition with a whopping like twelve names on it. Like, what I think is one percent of the voter checklist. Uh, I think what was signed Saturday waves that requirement. As soon as we know that, we'll let folks know, but hopefully it's not, um, jamming folks up too much to get, you know, ten or twelve signatures on the page.
Bill, Billy Senior was not too happy to have to do it, so hopefully we don't have to. He goes, he's years as fire commissioner, he goes, he was not happy to have to have to get ten signatures to put his name out of it. Then he just wasn't gonna do it. And I said, no, Billy, we'll get your name on there. Don't worry about it.
Get every candidate like down to the snowshoe at like five o'clock on Friday and everybody's signatures will be fine. Yeah.
I said, Billy won't have trouble getting ten signatures, but it's just the idea of it all.
I know, I know.
Yeah.
I a hundred percent agree. So as soon as we know that for a fact, we'll, we'll get that out to folks.
Okay. Okay. I just think we just put it there anyways, but I just, yeah.
All right, so, um, so we've made that decision, so we're formally going with an Australian ballot, um, town meeting again this year. We can, uh, we'll, we'll warn, um, we'll warn the information meeting, um, get those up. The charter, the next item here is the charter. So I, I emailed the board a draft earlier today. I don't know if folks had a chance to review it. If you didn't, don't worry. There's some content in there that I've highlighted as being things that we need to kind of edit, amend or tweak. The charter itself, uh, is a, is a governance charter. And the way that town can do this is a town can pass a charter that says basically whatever they want. The recommendation that we've had from council is to pass a governance charter that basically is the, the meat of what a governance charter would have for a community like ours. So it gets at, um, you know, powers, duties, who's, who's doing what, who appoints who, that kind of thing. Very kind of dry boilerplate, um, language. The last part of the charter, um, is actually what would deal with the local option tax, around the last part, like the third to last part. And that's the part that needs to be adopted by the community in order to impose that local option tax, to have that be part of the funding stack for the wastewater system. So town passed it last year, this year, what the town needs to pass is the governance charter and this being part of it. So, uh, if you have time over this next week, read through the, the charter, again, noting the things that are highlighted that need to be. Did I freeze? Uh-oh. You guys hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry, my screen froze for a second. So the governance charter is what's gonna have to be adopted at town meeting. So if folks want to read through that this week, um, you'll note some of the things that were highlighted to be changed. That's what's gonna be reviewed at the hearing on this coming Monday.
Yeah.
So we don't need to have a, a draft of that. Like finalized tonight, because even after the hearing, amendments can be made to it, um, based on the hearing. So, uh, if you want to look through that, um, between now and next Monday. Make any notations of things that you see as being issues or things that need to be changed or, um. Made specific to the town of Montgomery, you know, for example, we elect our municipal tax or our delinquent tax collector, we don't appoint them, so that needs to get changed in there. Make any notations there and then Monday we'll have our hearing. What I'll do is I'll get a copy of that draft up. I'll, I'll make some just basic edits to it to reflect how systems work in town, nothing. Consequential or more just like things that reflect how the community operates. I'll make those tweaks and get a draft up on the website, you know, mid, late week this week. So folks can have, you know, four or five days with it before the hearing Monday. And then we'll have the hearing Monday, that's the first hearing, and then we'll have one more hearing right before town meeting. We can bake that into the informational meeting where we'll go over it one more time. But again, this is the charter that needs to be adopted in order to institute the local option tax legally. The timeline here. The timeline here is another tricky part of this, because what happens is that the community passes and adopts the charter on town meeting day. After that happens, it goes up to the legislature and our representative. Either one of our senators or our rep has to introduce a bill. Regarding the charter to the legislature, and the legislature then needs to vote to ba- basically approve the charter. We're now in the second year of the biennium, and any bill that needs to actually make it through this year. Needs to be to the other chamber by town meeting day. In order to to work, I've talked to Felicia about what are the chances are that we could get this through this session. She didn't say it couldn't happen, but it's not super duper likely, so what probably will occur is that the town would adopt this. This year at town meeting, and then next session of the legislature. That she would then introduce it to GOVOPS as a bill, that then they would pass. Next year, so um, it's not a huge deal, um, you know, the revenue from the local option tax would go towards supporting that. Debt service on the final bond amount, which we're some years away from actually incurring, you know. If if when we get there, so it's not like we have to have that money rolling in today, it'd be nice to have it sooner than later, but that's the actual process, so. Charter gets adopted by the town, goes to the legislature, the legislature would have to vote to approve it, after they approve it, then we can actually do it, so it might be. Twenty twenty-three. Before we actually are able to institute a local option tax. That makes sense to everybody?
So the, the highlighted parts are what we're gonna add or take out?
So the highlighted parts on here are things that I had just highlighted, um, as being things that need, need attention. So for example, like, under appointed officers, um, we don't have a town service officer. Um, we don't appoint the delinquent tax collector, we elect the delinquent tax collector, um, we also elect the road commissioner. Uh, there's things around like the committee to handle vacancies, there's things in here that don't. Correspond to how we work, so I'm gonna go back in and just tweak that to show how processes is handled now. And then after next Monday, we can make any final tweaks to, to it, um, based on new feedback we get. Cool, um, so only other thing, uh, under town meeting was the budget committee update. The only update there is that. The budget committee will be start meeting, it's starting tomorrow, Tuesday, and then meeting Tuesdays and Thursdays through the end of the month. Um, the warning is on the website with a link to join the Zoom, so anybody who wants to. Come nerd out on numbers, by all means, feel free to come hang out, they're riveting meetings. Uh, and that brings us through, um, old business, unless anybody has anything else regarding. Town meeting day or anything else that we've discussed that's come to mind. All right, not hearing it, we will move on to new business, and the only thing, or I'm sorry, the. Only other thing under new business, we already handled the dog officer appointment, is overweight truck permits, um, we have one in from A and D logging. By Marika, so I'm gonna screen share real quick. Mark, can you see this? This is A and D logging, R D Davis.
Yeah, that looks all right.
Okay. If that looks good to you, then I would entertain a motion to approve the. Overweight truck permit for A and D logging. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to do that.
Great, is there a second?
I'll second.
Great, thanks Suzanne. Uh, any further discussion? I'm sorry, Larry, yeah, did you have a question?
Yeah, real quick, you said something about a hearing next Monday night, apparently I missed something.
Yeah, sorry, so this coming Monday, the twenty-fourth, is a charter amendment hearing at six thirty.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. Any other discussion on the motion on the table? During none, we'll vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye or raising your hand.
Aye, sorry.
That's okay, thanks, any opposed? All right, uh, any abstentions? And that.
I had another question, Charlie. Do we have to set the compensation for the dog officer?
We, we don't, I mean, the compensation's already set, um, what the board can do is move to increase. Compensation, um, as it sees fit. And so, uh, because right now, I think it's. It's a stipend of. Five hundred?
Yeah, I'm not sure, yeah.
Let me, let me chase that down with Liz, um, and then the board can talk about whether or not we want to increase that or not, um. Folks recall, we did increase the health officer, um, stipend to more kind of. You know, be commensurate with what the, what the job is, and dog officer is another one where. It's always kind of been the same thing for past couple decades, so. We might want to look at that too, but I can add that to our next agenda.
Okay.
So with that, we're through our agenda, um, if there's nothing else, uh. A motion to adjourn is always in order. All right, I'm gonna give it to Suzanne, and I'll give Mark the second.
Thank you all very much.
Bye, Larry.
So, um, we have a motion made and seconded, is there any discussion? If not. We'll vote, all those in favor of adjournment, uh, please signify by saying aye or raising your hands. Great. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, motion carries, um, thanks everybody for efficient reading.
Yeah, have a good night.
And don't forget, just to swing by the office at some point, um, this week, just to sign warrants.
Okay, yeah.
Awesome, thanks everybody.
Thank you.